Let's call the meeting to order, please, and rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. We have quite a few things to take care of. Earlier in the month, we thought we didn't have hardly anything tonight. Now it's turned into a lot of transfers and things to handle, so let's get started. First up, we have the commissioners' items for discussion.
We're going to start with Mr. Higginbotham.
The color-coded paper.
Yes. And reporting your biweekly report on the projects. And if you want to look at that, obviously, as every time I present this to you, the highlighted items are in yellow. The annexed generator project, we started to get some items delivered to this building. Still waiting on the delivery date of the generator itself. This chamber remodeling, again, still waiting on the delivery date for the replacement for the covering to the bulkhead. And as you know, this is the same contractor that finished up the jail bond project. And I will report to you that that did get finished. And the contractor submitted his final pay app, and that'll be paid out next week. So the jail bond fund will be closed out, and you've made your transfers to the highway and bridge funds. So that should close that record out finally. The jail window replacement project, that still continues to move. And I think they're getting getting close to being finished with that. We've added three projects since we've last met. One of these came out of a courthouse security meeting. The first project is item number 12, the magistrate's court on the first floor. There's a those windows along that front of the courthouse there are ballistic. And one of the windows, the laminate, has started to come apart on it. So this is a replacement for that window. That'll be paid for out of the building grounds fund. The second one is our public health department, the entrance awning. If you've looked at that, that awning is the original awning that was there when we bought the building, and it's pretty sad shape. So the commissioners approved replacing that awning. That'll come out of the building grounds miscellaneous fund. You can't pay that out of Cume Court because it's not part of the courthouse complex. And then we're also painting the two front offices, the reception area and then one of the front offices there and the prosecutor's office, and doing some wall repair there. And that project has gotten started, and that too will be paid out of Cume Court. The First Bank Expo Hall HBAC, looking at a ship date of the units, February 20th. And they've started doing the work on the inside to prepare for the arrival of those units. So I suspect they'll be here sometime first of March, which timing-wise, that's going to be really good, you know, between the cold and hot weather. The next project we've gotten underway is the annexed sump pump panel. And that is this building here. If you know, we set on a pretty healthy underground stream that goes around this building. And we have two pumps that run 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to pump the groundwater from around this building. We have two pumps in the building that are redundant. And this particular panel that's being replaced is, best I can understand, is the original panel. And it also has an enunciator that goes with it that should something go wrong with those pumps, it dials directly into 911, which in turn then can contact us. So that's the next project that will be underway. And the parts have been ordered for that. Any questions on the projects? And Beth, can I segue right into the fairgrounds?
If you would like to, you may.
Tony asked for, and we're glad to show you this presentation of what we've done since bringing Haley on board. She started June 5th of this year. And prior to that, we had assembled a committee to prepare for this position. The committee consists of myself, Commissioner Dwinger, Jonathan Ferris, Sandy House, who's the chairman of the local 4-H committee, Brad Terhar, who works at the fairgrounds, and then a couple of folks from the Tourism Bureau, Mary Walker. And Stacy Witcher is on this committee. And so we established some initial goals that we wanted to get done. And we didn't want to go beyond what was already there at the fairgrounds. We wanted to start with those goals that would take care of what we already have in place and how we can make those better and make it more marketable. So we set out some action steps that were given to Haley on her first day here. And we wanted to develop an interactive website so that the rental business that we have out there can be done on the internet rather than just picking up the phone, which is the way it's been before. We wanted to develop fresh promotional materials. And you have a sample of that before you. There's a pamphlet that's been put together that's available out at the Tourism Bureau and various places. We also wanted to develop a media, social media presence, and Haley will demonstrate that to you in here just a little bit. And then we also wanted to do a develop a lead generation email blast template. We also wanted to be able to utilize the resources from the Purdue Extension Office, the Tourism Bureau, and our own employees to gather this data, put it all together so that we can evaluate it and see what is the best path for marketing of what we currently have. The commissioners just recently passed a new rental fee schedule, which includes the rental of the furniture that we just bought. And we also, the next steps in this process will be updating our strategic plan and how we can better utilize that 24 acres that's on the west side of Round Bar across the street from the fairgrounds. And then as this data is developed, we'll continue to evaluate this and see if our the course that we've set here needs to be adjusted. So with that, I'm going to let Haley give you a presentation on the TV.
All right, it's on the screen behind you guys. I apologize. I couldn't quite figure out how to get it on the other ones. But just to point out a couple of things on this screen here, the top left picture, that is actually from our largest rental this year in July. We had the family campers and RVers group, it's a national group, and they were on the grounds for about a week. So that was certainly an interesting event, but it went pretty well. And then just a few other pictures that I took throughout the grounds, I thought.
That that particular event generated $13,000.
Really?
And it's a, we hope to get that back. It's not one we'll get every year because they go to different places, you know, at various years. But we got favorable reviews after this project was done, and I think they will return. But it also gives us an idea that this is another type that we need to reach out to.
Yeah, yeah. They were very happy with the grounds. And, you know, like Steve said, they travel around to different states every year. So it may be a while before they do get back to us, but certainly worth looking into to see what other kinds of groups are out there like that. So we'll move into the social media side of things. So some analytic analytical stuff here. On the left, that was, or so far, is our most popular Facebook post, which kind of shows that the community is really interested in events that are focused towards their kiddos and, you know, being able to do stuff as a family. So it was a Jurassic Empire dinosaur theme. It was in the First Bank Expo Hall. I'm not quite sure how attendance was for that event, but as you can see at the bottom there, the post impressions was just over 14,000. It reached just over 12,000, and the engagement with the post was over 1,600. So the engagement, somebody liked, commented, shared, that's what that means, the post reach. Anybody on Facebook who saw it, and then the impressions is any time it was put on Facebook. So moving on to the reach up in the upper right-hand corner for Facebook and Instagram. You can see Facebook is certainly better than what our Instagram is, but Instagram's a little bit of a tougher platform to grow quickly on. And then the visits down at the bottom, that's the number of times someone has gone to our actual Instagram or Facebook page, visited it, looking for more information. So this slide here, the bottom left kind of gives you an idea of the kind of pictures and posts that are being put out. That's a screenshot from the photos tab of our Facebook page. And then up at the top left, you can see we have just over 380 likes and just over 661 followers. Why Facebook has the different likes and followers, I'm not quite sure. Some people don't have the option to like and follow. So that's that's just a weird Facebook thing, I guess. For Instagram, we're at just over 100 followers. And then the bottom posts on the bottom right there just kind of gives an idea of a promotional type post for the First Bank Coleman Center. Moving on to the website, some data on it. So we launched the website and social media July 31st. So all this information is from now up until sometime last week when I put this together. But the website has had just over 2,800 visits as the homepage, it's the most popular page, which makes sense. But then the upcoming events is right behind that, which just shows that people are, again, interested in what's going on at the fairgrounds. And then I thought it was interesting to see how many people from out of state have visited the website. So that's what's on that right-hand column there. So I'll do a quick walkthrough of the website here. If you haven't visited it before, this is the homepage. Let people see where they pull it up. So the upcoming events, these are only events that are open to the public. We have quite a few private rentals, if you will. And I've considered having like a little icon that would show if it was a private rental, that I think what kind of people are out there that would show up to something that they're not welcome to, you know. So an option for people to sign up for email blast, and then some testimonials from others that have rented from us. So after each paid rental, we send out a survey asking individuals how their experience was, how we can improve, et cetera. Facility facility rentals page, this has all of our building rental options. See the nice new Wayne County Farm Bureau receipt on there, which I need to fix the font size for the tablet version it looks like. But if someone's interested in seeing more pictures, they can put the additional images and find more pictures of the facilities there. We'll go to the upcoming events page here quick. On this page, it also gets more in-depth information about the events. And I tried to include links when applicable, whether they have a Facebook page or a website or both. You can see the Wayne County 4-H Fair. I have that link on there just because people might get us confused as hosting. We're being confused as thinking that we are the ones putting on the fairground, really, we're just kind of the host or, if you will. And we'll check out our contact us page. See the feed on the left there is from our Instagram. And again, just more digital information. Jump back to the Wayne County event page. A few pictures there from past rentals. And then if someone is interested in a certain building, they can fill this form out. I've gotten about 10 of these submitted so far, which has been really helpful because it gives me an idea of what people are wanting. And then I'm able to contact them directly and adjust them that way. So that about covers it for the website. Talking money-wise, this is a comparison of 2022 versus 2023. I'll let you all look over that there, because there's quite an increase in '23 compared to '22.
This is a point of context. I did look back in 2021. Of course, we were just going through COVID and just coming out. '21 was about 94,000. 2020, which was right there, COVID was 80,000. 2019 was 105,000. And 2018 was 124,000. So this year, 2023 was the was our best year in a number of years.
Yeah. You can see July was a really good month, and that's the month that the camping group was out at the fairgrounds. Some highlights from this year, like we said earlier, the highest paid rental was that family campers and RVers group, just over $33,000. And I think it's really important to highlight just how many different events the fairgrounds host. In June, we have the American Southown Breeders Sheep Association, and they have just over, at their show last year, they had over 300 head of sheep and 75 exhibitors from 11 states. Another large well-paying rental is McDonne, their large agricultural combine, whatnot manufacturer. And they ran out the First Bank Expo Hall to bring in their large equipment and do trainings on it for other local individuals. Autumn Oaks, hopefully all of you have heard of that. That's been at the fairgrounds for many, many years. An event that we all enjoy hosting, for sure. New this year that I don't think we've ever had before was two amateur kickboxing events. They were both in the First Bank Coleman Center. Attendance went well for them, I think. And I've got one on the books for February of this year. And I think the other will be back again sometime this year. So certainly not something I'm familiar with, but they they were happy with it. And then just various shows. So the Gem and Minerals Show, Heartland Antique Show, Central Indiana Event Shows, Vintage Wheels Car Show, the Indiana Farm and Diecast Toy Show, and then various community events, fundraisers, company parties, banquets. And then just to go over the pictures on the screen, the top right is from Conservation Days. So that's put on by the Wayne County Soil and Water District primarily. But they bring in hundreds of local third and fourth graders to learn about agriculture and natural resources. And then the bottom is a neat picture from the Vintage Wheels Car Show. So. And then looking ahead at this year, so far, we've got 12 new paid rentals, new, meaning they weren't on the calendar last year. And then we've got 38 returning paid rentals. And then that graph there, so that's a breakdown of the number. So like in January of 2023, we had four paid rentals. That's a combination of the First Bank Coleman Center, the Sheep Barn, or the exhibit building, Expo Hall, wherever. And then in January this year, we're at five. So there's an increase in 2024 from the first six months compared to 2023. So is there any questions on anything?
I was talking about, I was debating last week out there, and the new chairs are in fantastic condition. Very comfortable, not noisy. Very good. Thank you. I do have a question. From your perspective, Haley, what what do you need to make this be even more successful out there?
I think I've got a pretty good foundation right now, really good resources and people to go to and ask. One popular request, I guess, has kind of been smaller breakout rooms or conference rooms. Sometimes the lobby in the First Bank Coleman Center will work for that, especially during the week when we don't really have many rentals. But that's been a fairly popular request that I can think of off the top of my head. All right. Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else, Steve?
Nope, I do not.
Okay. Mr. Pluster?
All right, thank you. We have been, for several months, talking about the expenditures from ARPA. Obviously, you're aware of the almost $6 million that's committed to projects under the HELP program. But that leaves about $5 million. And so I have, at all the places, I believe, a breakdown of a version of the ARPA investment list. Distinction here is the top part of this list is labeled recommendations. And so that is a list of projects that the commissioners have approved and are recommending that council approve so that we can get started on implementation. And that accounts for about $2,250,000, which leaves $2,050,981 that is still would still be uncommitted if all of those in the top section were approved. We've listed some of the things that that have been suggested. We haven't really taken anything out except some things that have been already funded through other means. One example of that is that the clerk just got $150,000 from the Secretary of State to pay for voting equipment. That had been a $150,000 item on our list, so it's been removed. It's already paid for. So I'd like to just go quickly through the list just to make sure that the brief explanation is understood. So on the recommendation side, hardscape and landscape at $500,000, that is this government complex to replace some of the landscaping and the hardscaping, the changes to the brickwork and the sidewalks that need to be made. That would also include changes to the entrance of the courthouse. If you'll recall, there are some ADA issues around that entryway, the main door to the courthouse that need to be addressed at some point, and this would this would give us funding to do that. We would we would need to work out all the details. I'll come back to you with the proposal of exactly what we would want to do. New cabling for data and voice. You've heard from from Craig a couple of times that he believes that's in the county's best interest to run new cables, two new cables, to each workstation in the complex. That would, one would be for data, one would be for voice. That would put us in a position where we could ease into a transition of the telephone system over time. His preference would be to start one office at a time and over a period of time, change out the phone system. That does have some operating costs involved, but his his opinion is that's we're going to have to go in that direction in the next few years. The current phone system is is really not replaceable. They've been able to get by by buying used equipment over time. And those resources are drying up. And at some point, we'll have to make the switch, and he'd like to be able to ease into it. The next roofs at the fairgrounds, you saw from some of the pictures that the Coleman and the Horse Barn have the original roofs from when they were first constructed, and those need to be replaced. The estimate at this point is about $300,000 to replace both of those buildings' roofs. Security issues is the next, including prox card locks on certain doors. We're trying to work with with some of our our security folks to to get some estimates. The best guess we have at this point is about a quarter of a million dollars. That could include things like the new x-ray equipment that kind of thing in the courthouse, as well as those proximity locks and other issues that will begin with with your agreement. We'll begin to assemble exactly what we want to do and what that cost would be. The next item is Bearcat. We've had several conversations about this. The commissioners believe that that we should move in that direction at the sheriff's request. Obviously, we have not, we had an agreement, we haven't taken a vote on it. There's been various opinions up to this point. So we want to we want to move this forward and either make a determination that that this will be one of the projects or it won't be so that we can we can have a final determination, because this has been hanging around for well over a year. I don't know exactly the timeframe, but it's been a lengthy period of time. So we want to move that forward. We recommend that it be done at a cost of roughly $350,000. The next item is a relatively new item, and I would just back up a little bit and tell you that under the HELP program commitments, we have not spent very much money at this point. But we are on the cusp, and we're ready to to make those investments. The communities that we're working with have been working on identifying prices and contractors and those kind of things. So I think in the next, when weather breaks, we'll be positioned to move that forward. Creating places is one of the projects that we have already identified under the HELP program, working with the six communities that were interested and are are willing to take that on. It's a place-based program that would generate facilities in each of those six communities that would be gathering spots for people in the community. There would be a fundraising campaign that each of those communities would would take on. Each of them have chosen to to raise $50,000. They need to be successful in that fundraising campaign to get a matching grant, dollar-for-dollar match of another $50,000 from the state. So each of them have at least $100,000 project that they would like to see happen. We have been pretty successful in including the $10,000 commitment for each of those six from the county. There is another $45,500, I'm sorry, $35,500 that's been committed from other sources. So a total of $45,500 that is kind of earmarked for these projects and would actually be committed when their fundraising campaign gets off in the next six months. So we're very pleased with the position we're in. We're going to, we think, be able to have $100,000 projects in each of those six communities, $100 plus. What we're suggesting here is up to another $100,000 for the communities that were not able to participate in HELP. And that's a $10,000 commitment for each of those communities. I say communities, thinking primarily, maybe talking about the incorporated towns. But it also is is possible to to work with five of the C3 organizations on this this same type of project. So again, this is still in the works. We didn't want to go out to the communities without without council being on board. So we're asking you to give this consideration and make a decision. The next line item is solar speed limit signs, and this has been a conversation back and forth for a couple of years as you've seen those start to proliferate. Some of the towns have already made that commitment themselves. I was just talking to Buddy Strong from Green, and Greensport purchased some signs out of the CARES Act dollars that were available a couple of years ago. He's very high on what that has done for lowering speeding within Greensport. We'd like to expand that to some of the other communities that don't have those. I don't want to speak for the sheriff, but he and I have talked about how the feeling that this really would help with with speeding problems in these small communities. Sheriff, do you want to make any comment to that?
Just a quick comment. I've been advocate of the solar speed signs or the radar-style speed signs. I've been advocate of the solar speed signs or the radar-style speed signs for a long time. I've actually purchased four of those that we've deployed in various parts of the county. Not only are we able to, you know, warn people that, that may mistakenly be speeding, but it also gives us data that we can use for different studies. I know we've done that for the commissioners in the past and helped, you know, with the highway department as well. Again, I advocate for those. I'm in the process currently of working on a partnership purchase, if you will, with the town of Abington and possibly yet another in Milford. So any help that the commissioners and council could give on that would be very beneficial to the county and to us.
Thanks, Ryan. Sorry to put you on the spotlight, Dan.
No.
I thought it was important to get your, your input on that. The next item is the journey home transitional housing for veterans. There is a, an established chapter of this 501(c)(3) in Randolph County, in Winchester, and they are looking to expand into Wayne County, where they would, they would provide a home. They're doing a fundraising campaign right now, and our recommendation would be that we, we look at providing them with up to $50,000 to help with their fundraising campaign to set up that organization and that, that home transitional housing in Richmond would be their target area.
What's their goal? Their fundraising goal? Do you know?
I did know, and I, I wanna say it was $200,000, but it's, it's in that range. And, and we could, we could find all that out, but we wanted to put it on the table tonight to get your feedback on whether that's something that you wanna consider. And, and that would be short-term housing for veterans who are experiencing challenges for one reason or another. You know, it could be PTSD, it could be drugs, it could be homelessness, it could be a combination of those things. So we'd like to consider that. And then the final category there, under our recommendation, would be for engineering and contractual services that relate to the, the projects as we would implement those ARPA projects. A hundred thousand dollars is, is what we're looking at. There, there is the ability on some of these things to pay engineering out of the money for a project, but by having this available, it would allow us to put more money towards those projects. It also is, is, we've had conversations with, with Ron Cross and his law firm. We just renewed our contract for them to serve as the county attorney, but this would be additional work on preparing a multitude of, of memorandums of understanding between communities and between organizations as we complete both the Help projects and these additional ARPA projects, so that we have a, a written agreement that if we provide this funding, this is what the community or the organization is agreeing to do for that, for that funding. And that would be on a, on a case-by-case basis at an hourly rate with, with that law firm. So those are the, the recommendations that we could all pretty much agree to. We actually, as we discussed today, found that all three of us, I think, are, are supportive of the next, the first one, under the possible additional projects, where we've talked about additional funding for downtown revitalization. If you'll recall, there's a million dollars of funding for the Help communities for downtown revitalization. If, if that goes well, as we think it will, and additional projects are identified in the entire county, not just the Help communities, these ARPA dollars would go to support those projects, up to $100,000 per project is, is what we're currently proposing for the, for the Help communities. This would be an extension of that to, to the entire county. The others, possible increase, and we may hear more tonight about whether there could be a need for additional revenue for the, for the 911 radio solutions, so we'll be hearing from Mary in just a minute, but we kind of earmarked $500,000 as an additional amount of money if, if needed. The homeownership is, is kind of a program that Brad's been working on to, to assist Wayne County residents in purchasing a home, the down, cut the down payment program. The details are, haven't been worked out yet. We've gotta think in terms of, if you all are supportive of that, we can get some details together before we have final, come to you with final approval. Animal control is something we've been, been working on for a while. You know, under Help, we'll be doing a study with the, with the help of the Wayne County Foundation. They're overseeing that. It's scheduled to begin in the middle of February, and once we have that report, then we'll know what kind of dollars might need to be invested in animal control. I, I will digress for a minute and tell you that we've been working on a contract and hopefully have a final draft of that tonight. That would enter into a per-animal contract with both Help the Animals and, and the Animal Welfare League, if they're willing. We've been working on the contract language for a couple of months now. We could not reach agreement with the Animal Welfare League on, on extending their contract. And I would say, in the past, it's been an agreement and it's been a donation. The numbers we have for 2023, that we just got today from the animal control officer, is that 34 animals were, were placed at the Animal Welfare League in the, in 2023, at a cost of $48,000. That's a huge cost per animal. Because they haven't had space available, we've tried to negotiate back and forth on how additional space could be made available in that facility, and we just couldn't reach an agreement on, on having more assurance that there would be space available when we need it. And so we moved in the direction of a per-animal contract with Help. Brad was able to negotiate that at $200 per, per dog. That $200 per dog would, if we equate that to the number of animals, that the Animal Welfare League would be a $7200 commitment for those 34 animals, not the 48,000 that, that was given in the past as a donation. So over at, at least six months, we've had conversations back and forth with, with Animal Welfare League and Help, and, and this is where we're at today.
What was the need, the number of animals needed in 2023?
We, it was significantly higher than 34. We don't have an exact number, because in some cases, they, they simply chose that they would not be able to, to pick up a particular animal, that it wasn't, it wasn't a, a danger to the public, and so it, it wasn't, it wasn't picked up for lack of a place to take. So this, we believe, and Brad, feel free to chime in here, you had the negotiations with Help, but it, it appears that they do have space available. They were reluctant to enter into a contract in the past because of some previous experience and, and being overwhelmed with some issues. This will allow them to turn us away if they run out of space, but I believe they think they can accommodate us.
Yeah, and the, we're saying, based on this, up to 20 dogs a month, so significantly more than 34 for the whole year. Do I think, I think that's probably even still, we could probably take more than that if, but, you know, our animal control officer does a great job of finding alternative places now, instead of just picking the dogs that were taken to the shelter. So I think we wanna continue that, too.
We believe it will fit with the, the current budget number of $50,000 with, with some judicious work by the animal control staff.
She's more than aware of knowing our budget number, so.
But we will keep you posted. We're, we're talking about requiring a report on a quarterly basis from, from either of those, those shelters. We know that, that Help is willing to enter into this contract.
Help approved it with the board yesterday.
We do not know about the Animal Welfare League, but we intend to extend the same contract to them to make that available at that same rate of $200 per dog. And then there's a, a provision in there to, to deal with cats that might be necessary, but at a negotiated price that would be less than $200 per animal for cats. So we're, then this, this animal control number of 300,000 would be a placeholder for whatever might come out of the, the study that's gonna start in February. We don't know what to expect there. Mary Ann suggested, actually it was 250,000 to start with. Yesterday, she requested that we bumped that number up to 300,000. So we did, that's, that's not, it's not been agreed on by the commissioners to bring it forward as, as a recommendation, simply at this point a placeholder, as is the One-Stop Center, which is a, a project that Kathy Williams has been working on. And when we asked at one of our previous meetings, what number she'd like for us to pencil in there, she said a million dollars.
It's a big one.
That is, that is, is what we left in there. And then the single-family home rehabilitation, it's a project that Mary Ann has been looking at, which is, is still many of these in the possible category that need additional work before we come back to you and say that this is a recommendation. So we're still available to, to take additional recommendations from, in fact, we'll be talking to the elected officials and department heads again at our meeting next week, that you all are invited to, to, to add additional projects that you may have in mind that we'll analyze. But there's still roughly $2 million that, that would not be committed if you commit to everything in our recommendation list. So with that, be happy to answer any questions. And, you know, obviously, we're presenting this to you as a recommendation, the first item tonight, so if you all wanna, wanna take some time to digest this and think it through and come back to your next meeting to, to take any action on it, that would be fine. The ones that, that we all agree on, we wanna be able to get started fairly quickly, so, whichever ones you think you might be able to approve at your next meeting, whenever you're ready, we'll be able to get started on getting estimates and getting plans put together. So remember, we have to make a commitment, meaning a contractual commitment to doing the project by the end of this year, the end of 2024. And then if it's a construction project, it has to be completed by the end of 2026. If it's some other type of project, it has to be completed by the end of 2025. So any questions at all?
Jeff, I thought we had a conversation at one point about, in this recommendation list, there being some paving done at the fairgrounds to increase parking and whatever.
We have, we have discussed that. We didn't have complete agreement, and so wanted to talk again with, with Mike before we add a recommendation there. You know, one of the things that I actually asked Mike a week or two ago was, if you have additional equipment needs, you know, what might, might those be? And again, some of this could come down to timing, and if, if we're scheduled to pay for something out of one pot of money, if it's something that's, that's quick and we can pay for it out of ARPA funds and leave the general fund or, or Edit Fund or whatever other source of funding it might be, that doesn't have a timeline attached to it, then it would, it would give us more time to complete the project. We have discussed paving. We've also discussed some of that coming out of, of the naming rights funds over a period of time. We talked to Mike last week or the week before about looking at, at how he might phase a project of paving so that we could do X amount each year for three or four years to get it paid out of some other source. Again, remember that, that what's listed here is, is what we have talked most specifically about these ARPA funds for. There are obviously other pots of money that, that some of these projects can be paid out of, but, you know, the highest priority projects, and then what helps us meet the timelines that are associated with ARPA that are not associated with some of the other available funding streams that we have. So that, that.
As long as it hasn't fallen off the radar, because I think that's.
No.
We just, it might have been last week.
Last week, we asked Mike to get some hard numbers on what it costs to do the paving in the neighborhood of the First Bank Expo Hall, south of the main drive-in. Also, we need to point out that, well, we received, what, $12.7 million. We have spent only 1.4 million, and we've had this money working hard for two years during this time when interest rates have been significantly higher than they have been for a long, long time. Almost the day we received this money, ARPA money, was the day that interest rates began to go up. So this money, you passed a resolution saying that the ARPA interest would be going into the general fund. So this is kind of found money, if you will, that could be utilized for programs, projects, such as larger expansion of the parking lots at the fairgrounds. So we mustn't forget that there is a significant amount that has been earned on ARPA funding.
Thank you. Quite, other questions? Max?
For whatever reason, in the budget process this year, we normally had, my understanding, put $150,000 in our budget for equipment at the highway department. We ended up with only 58 this year. We've got equipment that they will be buying. This, I think this is an excellent way to get some of this money spent quickly, not have to worry about it, using it to fill that gap rather than some other general fund monies.
So I think if you're saying that council would approve our recommendations if we approve your recommendation, I think we could support that.
Well, we just spent $150,000 on a dump truck.
Maybe I read too much into that.
We just spent ARPA dollars on two dump trucks, where they've already been paid for, you know, for highway dump trucks.
But for the, the year of 2024's budget, there's money that we normally would have paid out of general fund that is not going to the highway department, because we didn't put it in there, and this is a good way to get that back to.
That is absolutely something we can consider.
Well, don't forget, we have the jail fund money.
Cannot go over the cap, but.
Right, not the capital equipment, but that certainly will be a windfall for the highway department.
So other questions, and then if there aren't?
The security issues, is that for both buildings?
It would be for the courthouse.
Correct. The Bearcat, I, I gotta say that I question that based upon, the city is buying one, and if that's gonna happen, why do we need two of those in the county? And it's a lot of operational expense and stuff to go with it. I, I question that.
I would just say that there was a situation today where.
In the county.
Vehicle, in the county, where that vehicle would have been helpful. Sheriff, do you wanna, do you wanna make any comments on the Bearcat?
On, on that incident?
Well, no, I'm, on the Bearcat in general.
Just in general, yeah.
So today, a little after nine o'clock, we received a call of a person who had had actually battered, feloniously battered, one of his family members had armed himself with at least two different firearms and was refusing to make themselves available to talk with law enforcement. And I'm trying to be polite as I say this, and I also understand that I can only provide you with a limited amount of information.
Sure.
Because of the circumstances. But after over seven hours of attentive negotiations and having my estimation of about 20 officers on scene and having to borrow a an armored vehicle from another county that deprived them of the ability to use that in their own county if they needed it, when that armored vehicle was driven into the front yard of that individual, he gave up without incident. It saved his life. It undoubtedly saved the the lives of the officers. And quite frankly, I mean, you cannot put a price on that at all. The citizens of Wayne County have voted to put me in office to maintain their security. And I'm certainly doing the best that I can. The citizens of Wayne County have voted on each one of these commissioners to determine what's in the best interest of of the county in terms of capital purchases. And they have unanimously decided that this is a piece of equipment that is needed. I've, you know, tried to tried to acquire this now for over three years. Now we have a perfect opportunity to do that. And if I understood correctly, there's over $2 million that are still not really included in this. So there's plenty of of additional money, well, in excess of the $350,000 that I've asked for to make some additional purchases.
I would remind people that the last time you made the ask, you did offer to come up with some of the money from your own budget, potentially from from the commissary fund. Is that offer still on the table?
Yeah, so the last quote that we got was in August of 2023. It was a little over seven or $375,000 for the total purchase price. I'm I'm 100% certain that the the quote in 2024 will be more than that. I will absorb within my budget anything over the $350,000 that is requested for by the commissioners.
So we have Randolph County that obviously we've used it multiple, theirs multiple times. You have the city of Richmond that is also, I mean, you know, I'm not sure the probability of three occurring in Wayne County at the same time. You know, I'm just not sure that that would occur.
But it's more like an insurance policy. How many lives does it have to make that it makes it justified?
Brad, I I understand that, but we have an insurance policy with Richmond acquiring one as well. And is it just the best place to spend the funds?
And we need to remind everybody that in the checks and balances of local government, our responsibility is to scrutinize the requests for financial matters.
Absolutely.
And so we need to exercise that. And that's the concerns that I'm putting out. I don't, in no way am I against law enforcement, what they can do. But there's a lot of what we can do. And Randy, you see the list is far more than the money we've got. There's not money laying there that's not even being considered. The money's asked for is far more than what we've got, so.
And these are tough choices.
Yeah, very tough choices.
I understand that, and I think everybody does.
Yeah.
And that's, that's why we're coming to you now.
Yeah.
With a recommendation. And obviously, you know, you all need to consider it from from a council perspective.
And as Tony expressed his opinion on this of having a second one in this area, I concur with his questions and concern.
You know, I think that I went on record the last time we had a discussion on on this in the public. And while I can appreciate everyone has their own opinion and, you know, we rely on surrounding counties or the state police or the city of Richmond. It's kind of like a fire truck. You buy it, you never have to use it. But if you need it, it's sitting there. We don't borrow snowplows from the city. We don't borrow police cars from the city. And, you know, we've talked often about this being money for one-time expenditures that we would not necessarily have money in the general fund or any other fund to make those purchases. And so, you know, I respect the three commissioners, you know, being unanimous in this. Being retired from public safety, I've been in those situations. I understand those situations. And I I still think that it's it's a good investment of money from from our perspective to to support this request.
I guess I don't know if we ever had the question answered about upkeep and storage. It's been thrown out there, but that's going to fall on council in the future. Do we know about that?
What is the answer? I mean, commissioners, what are your thoughts? How much is it going to cost?
Well, I remember when.
Where is it going to come from?
When Randy did the presentation six or eight months ago, I think the he had a resolution for the storage of it, I believe, in the wash bay. Wasn't that one of your options? And then maintenance was less than $5,000 annually, if I remember right.
Estimated $2,000 annually. And Mike Sharp has said that he can handle any of that. So the cost may be even less.
Because his mechanic is familiar with this, the engine that's in this, correct?
With that engine and chassis as well.
And so.
And what about insurance, insurance, vehicle insurance? Just asking.
Not sure it could be damaged very.
Well, I I think maybe on the insurance policy, we can talk to our liability cover. The the.
It would be liability.
The 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 cost of the insurance to cover would might not, it'd be more of a benefit for the site, safety of the citizens and the officers that might balance it out, that they may look at the liability and say, okay.
But we don't know what that cost is.
We could get.
And we could get that.
I mean, it'd be good to know.
Yeah, we could get that.
An answer for that. But again, Sheriff, you're saying that maintenance costs would come out of your current budget, and you're pretty comfortable that that could happen.
Correct.
Right, and I think Brad raised an excellent point regarding the liability. This is a deterrent, just as you avoided a life threat. You were in a life-threatening situation all the way around today. And this was a deterrent vehicle where a police action shooting was avoided. And this also, I believe, the Bearcat is a tool that can reduce our liability. And in this time, right now, public safety liability is threatening county's ability to even get liability insurance. And this would be a deterrent because one police shooting liability claim would be significantly higher than the purchase of one Bearcat. That is the main reason that I favor this because safety for our own public safety personnel, the life saving there, and the tragedy that our people go through when they do have to take action to protect the public through drawing of their weapon. I think this vehicle can avoid the tragedy that we place our law enforcement personnel in. And by avoiding that situation for our people is a very important action I think we can take. And this purchase, I think, would help avoid that tragic environment.
I think everything that you've said is addressed by the city of Richmond having one of these vehicles.
Well, I understand your perspective.
What what information do you have that you can tell us that there have been two or more of these incidents at the same time? How often did that occur last year?
Randy?
It's it's a common practice. And I I mean no disrespect by saying I I don't expect you to understand how to do my job or what's in the best interest of of doing my job. And again, I absolutely mean no disrespect by that. And that's why you trust on consultants to tell you how to do certain things. That's why you come to me and and ask me for some of that information. We have, we have had multiple situations in the last three years since I've asked for this piece of equipment where we've used multiple armored vehicles. It's common when they are available that we use more than one because, for an example, if one were to get disabled while it's on scene with officers inside of it, now they're stuck and unable to unable to safely deploy. If it gets stuck, you know, if we don't have the luxury of frozen ground like we did today and it gets stuck, then, you know, we have a recovery situation under under possible threatening situations. So having multiples is absolutely necessary in today's environment.
But with all due respect, you know, my question is, how many times has it happened in the last year for the need to have more than two in Wayne County?
I don't have those hard numbers, but it has happened more than once. And as as Barry Ritter mentioned earlier, you know, it's very important to understand that that we don't ask to borrow a a fire truck from another agency unless the one that is currently deployed for that region is not in service. We make sure that those are available, and it's because time is of the essence.
Yeah, and we also have interlocal agreements with other communities to help each other out. You know, that's just my opinion. What I also want to know from the commissioners, because what happens oftentimes, we make these decisions and then all of a sudden a $250,000 need comes up. Maybe we don't, maybe you don't know, but is there anything that you can see a need for in Wayne County government that's multi-hundreds of thousands of dollars that maybe we need to spend the money on now while we have it?
Obviously, there are dozens of of other needs. The question is, what's the priority? I I think I'll take a stab at speaking for all three of us, which is always a little.
This is rare, by the way, for us to be like-minded about the controversial issue.
This is one that that we think is important enough that it rises to the level where it should be a part of of our approved projects with ARPA. Trust me, I understand where you're coming from. I've gone back and forth on this a couple of times in the last three years. But as you as you watch the news every night, the situation in our country and in our state is changing dramatically. You know, there's, there's far more violence, there's far more incidents of of gun violence than there ever has been before. And at this point, this seems like a prudent step when dollars are available as we prioritize what we spend the rest of the ARPA dollars on. And I and I understand.
I mean, I think we've clearly talked about.
Are you saying then you know of nothing in the next three years that's going to rise up to big dollar item that you're going to turn to us and ask?
I believe in my my 20-some years in county government, I know enough about our financing that I do not foresee anything that we can't handle with our current, our current resources. I mean, I know.
And that's good to know.
I know what lots of money we.
How many times, how how many times have we approved a budget? And then we have multiple, you know, we'll, we'll have a request for over a million dollars come to us. And it's never put in the budget, you know, to begin with. So and and we've all talked about that.
Yeah, we've diffused all the ticking time bombs, Tony. This $12 million has really allowed us to diffuse all the ticking time bombs. With the the tanks at the highway department, you know, the the security, you know, all of, all of these lists. Because while a lot of counties, and I've talked to a lot of commissioners in other counties, spent the lion's share of their ARPA money on nonprofits and community quality of life and arts and culture and feel-good stuff. When you look at our no-nonsense ticking time bomb stuff, Wayne County's top priorities are to make sure we have anticipated those big dollar items that are probably going to be, we're possibly going to be facing them in the next three, five, 10 years. So we've diffused that ticking time bomb. So we're out ahead of it, so we do not have those surprise expenditures. We're not doing warm and fuzzy usage of ARPA.
And I think.
Could I ask?
Let me just add add a point because I I think what's important to recognize here is as we've gone through this process, we've gone through it together. Council and commissioners talking through some of these things. And I absolutely recognize that we, all 10 of us, are not going to agree on every single project. And if this is one that you disagree on, so be it. I I I believe that that your your motives are are in in the county's best interest. Absolutely believe that. And I hope you believe that of us, that this is something we think, we think it's time we do. And so again, at some point, and Beth, give me some guidance here on how long you want to continue this conversation. Because I don't think, I don't think you're going to take a vote today.
No, no, I was getting ready to move on soon. That's okay.
I'm ready whenever you are. I want to make sure you feel comfortable in asking us these questions.
Yeah.
Individually or or collectively, because we all need to be in this together and and work forward together. It doesn't mean that all 10 of us will agree on everything, but a majority has.
A consensus.
I just have two quick questions for Sheriff. One is, where where do we borrow that from now? Is it Randolph County or where?
Wherever we can get it. There's, there are two that are the closest is Randolph County. The next closest is Hancock County.
How long have they happened? Do you happen to know?
Randolph County's had theirs for about three years. Hancock County, probably about the same.
So so if if RPD has one and they're using it that day and they don't have one, then we've got to wait till we get it from, that's what I was trying to see. How far away might that be if we couldn't get the one in Richmond?
Yeah, that that's actually correct. And again, I want to remind everybody that when we ask for an asset from another area to come and service our area, then it's not available in theirs. And if they have a problem in theirs, that's, we we need to be self-sufficient. We hire our own police, we hire our own jail staff, we hire our own street department because we need to be self-sufficient. We need to take care of our citizens, and this is exactly what we're trying to do here.
Having the tools to do the job, and I see Mike Sharp sitting here, so it makes me think. I could get out and clean Beale Road with a shovel, but it's going to be a whole lot easier with a snowplow. But I could still get the job done.
If you're willing.
If you're willing.
No, 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 no. I'm just saying, having the right tools to do the job makes the difference. At that particular job, you're talking about people's lives on the line, not just clean my driveway. So I didn't mean to minimalize cleaning the driveway. So Mike, please remember Beale Road when you're out and about, but thank you.
I'd like to make one final point and we move on.
We're done.
There's no guarantee, I don't know what the status. There's no guarantee, I don't know what the status is with, with Richmond's, if they've ordered it or even if they will have a memo of understanding with us.
They got it for a lot less than $350,000 too.
Has it been confirmed it's ordered?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, they have a contract that went through the Board of Works.
I'd like to say one thing, too. I'm on a board of directors that services preschools in five counties, not Wayne County, but others. And in the last five years, the violence that has erupted in these preschools with three and four-year-olds has been horrendous. The, not just profanity, but kicking, biting, throwing stuff among these preschoolers has just been beyond anything these teachers have ever seen. And the ability to hire these teachers has really been a major challenge. So I predict these, these five, these four-year-olds, five years ago, are now just about six years old from entering the law enforcement arena where they'd be tried for violence against law enforcement. What has happened to children beginning about five years ago is going to manifest itself in adult crime and violence like we've never seen. It is so sad, it's very troubling, it's not just in one county, it's in east central Indiana. And it is, I think, the most troubling, concerning phenomenon that I've ever seen. Violent children.
I have one question that they don't probably have an answer for, but get it. How many other counties in the state of Indiana have two or more of these vehicles? I don't need that tonight, but would you like to know that?
I have, I had one question I wanted to ask Randy. Two years ago, no offense to you, two years ago, you applied for grants for this. Didn't get it, but you didn't more, didn't more apply last year because you didn't get it the year before. Is there a chance you'd apply for a grant this year to possibly get part of this?
Absolutely, and we, we are constantly working on that. In, in full disclosure, I'm, I'm so passionate about getting one of these, and I feel like it's such a need for, for us to have one, I'm going to seek any type of, of funding possible. But I wouldn't know until sometime later this year whether or not we would be approved. And, you know, if, if we can apply for that and if we are approved, then certainly I would, I would expect you to redirect these funds.
The comment about fire trucks.
Well, we don't love the fire trucks, but we sure take them every place we need to go.
Yeah.
I think that's kind of what some of us are looking at on this bear cap too. If they're available, we get them from someplace else.
I'll admit, I've been on the fence about this since it was first brought to us. But I also don't want to, I mean, like, the commissioners have all agreed on this and it's, I just think it's something that we need to consider. And I looked down one line, let's move on. Giving $100,000 to the people who you said were not able, you were being nice to participate. They were not willing to participate.
Some were unwilling, some were unable because they already committed their-
So, I mean, there's $100,000 that I would feel better about rolling into the bear cap than giving to the other people who didn't really want to participate. This has been a big thing for the whole town, so.
We've had that discussion among the commissioners too.
I'm not trying to be mean, but-
And, and here's where I come down on that.
Okay.
That the, the help process has been, in my opinion, incredibly helpful in building relationships between the towns and the county. And between the towns and the city for that matter. And because people made a decision two-plus years ago, two-and-a-half years ago, almost now, I'd like to try to, for a relatively small amount, try to offer them an opportunity to work with us again and, and see if we can start to build those relationships. I think it's important, it's only at most $100,000, it could be significantly less than that depending on two things. Number one, how many of them opt in?
They may not even want to work.
They may not, they may not. And number two, how much they set as their goal? Because the provision from, from the Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority is that the maximum that one entity can contribute to the fundraising is $10,000. But it's 10,000 or 35%, whichever is less. So if their, if their project is only to, to raise $25,000, then the maximum we can give would be 35% of 25,000 or 10,000, again, whichever is less. If they only do 10,000, obviously it's no more than 3,500. So I can't give you an exact number without starting to talk to those, those towns and see who's interested at, at what level.
The same question applies to your top one down at the bottom, if that's a million dollars.
Correct, correct, absolutely, absolutely. But that is, as, as it is with the help dollars, those would be grants to individual property owners who didn't have the decision-making authority to, to opt in or not to, to help. So that would be a little bit different. We wouldn't be giving money to the town, we'd be giving money to an individual property owner whose project scored high enough in the grant process to, to have some merit in that.
I guess if you look at that, the solar stop, it's the same. It would be the same thing.
Correct.
And some of the towns already have them.
Correct.
So then we want to give them to other towns and-
That is our recommendation, yes. Because some of those other towns got, got those from other sources of grant money.
That's the decision of the town to do that, not do it. There's positive points is the decisions.
I agree, I agree. And what we're trying to do is build bridges. So.
I understand what you're saying. Good discussion.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, for sure. So I don't think I'm ready to tell you a drop-dead date that we'll vote.
And we don't need that.
Maybe by next month at, at workshop? I mean, we need to get stuff started. We have the year to get things committed.
And I think that's why we were, like, okay, let's get a list of them, that are priorities, so that we can move the-
This gives us time to ask some questions and-
Sure, and in the meantime, we'll be looking at other options to round out that other $2 million.
And, and there may be ideas that you guys haven't thought of that council has and-
And we're asking for those.
Yeah, we'll give that back.
Hey Jeff, can I ask, did Journey Home, did those, those people only ask for 50,000?
They didn't ask for a specific amount.
Oh, okay.
We talked amongst ourselves and that, that was the number that we gave up.
I just know, it seems like we have a lot of veterans that need help and that seems like a low number to me.
They have, they have a specific size behind that would house six people, I believe, is the number. And so it's, it's not, they didn't ask for a million dollars.
I think we originally had 100,000 on there.
There are so many housing needs.
It negotiated down to 50, how, I have no idea.
In all honesty, you know, this was not a program that I really endorsed because there are infinitely many housing needs in Wayne County. Emergency housing is one of them, and emergency housing for veterans is definitely one that is- I've been to probably 100 housing meetings in the last three years, and emergency housing is extremely high. I, I really wish we could have more housing money freed up. There's another housing that I, I wish was on the top half instead of the bottom half, it was a sheet of paper, but-
I don't, I don't want to see a small town get a fountain in their square, and we have homeless veterans in our county.
Right.
Something's wrong with that for sure, I'm sorry. I mean, I just feel like, and this is just one program.
I don't want homeless teenagers, we have homeless teenagers in this county right now.
We do, we do. There's, there may be some other things that we can look at with some of this other money to address some of those things for our own citizens, so that they become good adults and workers in our county and things like that. It's getting harder and harder to come by.
I, I would just like to say a real quick word on behalf of the Single Family Home Rehab. That is the very last one on the list, on the, on the second listing here. This is a program called Building Together. It is a program from Bridges for Life, a program that's worked with the sheriff to help inmates transition from incarceration to a productive life, help leading them to rehab and a sober life. The way the program works is that an inmate is taken from incarceration to a training program in construction. Building Together acquires a home like the trainee has, has value but has had some challenges, shall we say, is in need of rehab, just like the trainee who will be trained to use construction skills to rebuild that home's life. They have already identified eight homes where the trainees would be able to move in and work on restoring the home immediately while they work on the other four homes that are in need of great repair. At first, it would be just rudimentary construction skills, they'd be trained in and ultimately certified in. Clearly, the skilled trades would have to be performed by paid electricians, plumbers, et cetera. This is a self-sustaining program because Bridges for Life would acquire the properties and then would offer them for rent. But most of the individuals would be recovering from substance abuse and incarceration. The program would have numerous benefits, including reduction in recidivism, would obviously require the individuals to recover from substance abuse. They would have a certified trade that's highly marketable today. If anyone's tried to find a construction or handyman, they would also become productive citizens, tax-paying instead of tax users, and would hopefully be set forth on a productive life and hopefully reunited with their families. I would like to see that above the line instead of below the line.
I think she's a little mistaken that this program is not that one. We've talked about that program and it's a very good program, I think we're all in agreement of. I can't remember if that's not the name of it, that we wanted to use opioid money for that project.
Possibly, or possibly a combination thereof, but that's what we've always called-
Was that the, I don't think that was, not what?
Building Together.
That's what you've called one program. I, I was under the impression that this was something else, so we'll, we'll sort that out.
We'll sort that out later, okay. We need to move on and we need to approve our minutes from our December 20th workshop.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion and a bunch of seconds, all in favor? Any opposed? There are none.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries.
All right.
Beth, do you mind if I, can we get this approved real quick with the help, our contract real quick?
Okay, okay.
Move for approval for the contract with Help the Animals with correction, did you read this?
Right.
There's a placement rate for reporting on a county for a quarterly basis, was not added. We'll have him added in there.
That would become 2A on that quarter.
Yeah, 2A.
Second, as revised?
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? And again, this version is for help, but there will be another version for, that we'll offer to the animal welfare.
And we'll approve that when we see it.
Which will ultimately end up with only one contract or two.
No, two, so that we have more options.
Because there's no guarantee A W L is going to be entertained.
So with that, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries.
Thanks, Beth.
Yay.
We've been working on that for a while.
Okay, Mike Sharp, we have two letters of commitment for Community Crossing Matching Grant Fund, financial commitment letters for us, we just need to approve. Do you want to explain these or?
Yeah, there's two different projects. One's going to be for doing an overlay in the Bayou or subdivision. They're off of 27, they're north of 70. The other one would be some chip and seal, single-SEAL roads throughout the county. I think there's about 14.22 miles of single-SEAL. We have to be under that $250,000 mark and that puts us right under that 250 for the chip and seal part of it. And then I believe the overlay is 174,000, over $174,000 to do a inch and a half, two-inch overlay over that whole subdivision there. So this would be applying for the grant and then they would pay for half of it. So I think the total of the two projects, we got two different letters, one for each project. The total is a little over $407,000. So our part that we would be paying from Wayne County would be a little over $203,000.
We just need a motion to approve both of these letters, we all signed these. Motion by Max, second by Gary, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. I will pass these around for signatures.
Thank you very much.
And when you're done, give them the mic so they'll have these.
Good idea.
I'm running out of ink. Next up, we have an appropriation of the Naming Rights Fund in the amount of $101,470.49.
Yes, so we got $100,000 in late December for, for year two. There was $1,470.49 left over from year one.
Okay.
So we're requesting that you appropriate that whole amount. Remember that, I'm not sure where we're at on payment for the furniture, but you had agreed to pay for it yourself. We had the money available appropriated, we would pay back wherever that money came from.
Yes.
That's the intention for, Steve, it's about 40,000 for the furniture?
About 38,000.
38,000. And then now we'll leave us around $60,000 to do the projects. The fairgrounds, we'll come to you with that list of what we intend to do.
Was this advertised as an additional appropriation?
It is not tax dollars, so it didn't have to be advertised.
So we just need a motion to appropriate the $101,470.49.
So moved.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none.
Thank you.
Sure. We have EDC transfers. Valerie had sent me a list of all the things just to clean their books up from the end of the year. There's a few things here that require pre-approval from Wayne County Council. You can see on the back of your agenda. I mean, one of them's $8.38 and one's $4.2610. So I need a motion to approve those two transfers for EDC.
So moved, second.
Motion by Tony, second by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Of course, there are none. And the rest of the list here are things that don't require approval, but these are transfers that they do need made in their budget to make all their bookwork come out right. So if I could have a motion to approve those?
It doesn't require, yeah.
Oh, that's right, it doesn't, I just read that, didn't I? Okay, so those, those are the transfers. You agree with it, don't you? All those transfers just need to be made in the auditor's office, I suppose.
So you might, it'd probably be good to say that the $60,631.45 that they did not spend out of their budget, that goes back into that, that it's-
Returns to consolidated edit. Yes, there is. All right. I thought most of that was self-explanatory and I gave Valerie the night off, so you don't have to come. Okay, we have transfers. The township assessor talked to me this week and we took away his travel and education money because we told him to use the fund that, that pays for the elected officials. And then he found out later that they're not one of the elected officials that's covered under that. So they're, they're actually going to conference this week and, and once again in the fall. So we need to transfer money from council contingency, $2,100 from 3395- So we need to transfer money from council contingency, $2,100 from $33,950 to the township assessor's travel line of $33,230. And then we need to transfer $1,600 from council contingency, $33,950, to the township assessor's training and education fund of $33,890. So.
Do all these at once?
Can we? Is that okay if we do that? Let's go. So.
Brandon's here.
Brandon is here. Do you have any questions or things you need to tell us about, or can we just transfer this stuff? Go for it, huh? All right.
For whatever reason, these were requested in his budget, but at the end, they weren't included in the budget. So we don't know why, but this is getting it back to things he asked to have it back. He's used some of his money already.
So it's putting it back where it needs to be? And he found it in other places and is moving it all around?
Well, it's all out of his funds.
Out of his funds, so, yeah. So you can see the list there of transfers. All the transfers we have here? I'll second. Motion by Max, second by Kathy, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Real quick, Ron had to leave, but he had a couple appointments to the redevelopment commission that we just need to approve. One of them is Gary Saunders, and the other one is myself. So I will sign the one for Gary, and then Max can sign the one that appoints me to the redevelopment commission. Do we have a motion to sign these?
So move. Second.
Motion by Bob, second by Barry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Might just mention that Harold Brown's a long-term member of the redevelopment commission, appointed by the commissioners, chose not to be reappointed this year, and so the commissioners appointed me to join you.
Oh, man.
Sorry, I'm sure you wanted to.
That's why I waited until after you appointed her.
Like I don't see you almost every day, anyway, huh? The redevelopment commission handles the money that is from the Tiff district, and we meet once or twice a year. We meet and vote to capture the money. And then, we haven't spent much of it for a while, so I'm sure that'll start happening here soon. Okay, do you sign all three of those?
Well, there's two.
Oh, I think there's three. Bobby, do we give these to you since Ron had to leave? Okay. All right. Last but surely not least, Mark Holzer.
About 45 minutes, is that okay?
No. I wish I had that big orange.
You gotta make me, you gotta save me one.
I know. You got five minutes.
Okay. Bobby, you want to help me pass these out?
Here. Well, you can just pass them around.
Well, I got your names on the front, so.
We can read.
A new septic system.
Low training, every time I see low training on subject line, low training.
Okay, thank you.
That's Tony's.
James Tony. You're the proud owner of a, are we allowed to look?
There it is. That's a Christmas gift, go right ahead.
All right, in 100 words or less, what you got?
You want to take the coupons out of those, you can use them. It's nice to see on a cold Indiana night, all these faces that came out here to hear Do any of you know how Wonder Bread got its name? Wonder Bread was the first bread to have sliced bread that they sold. And when they did this, the company.
How was it?
Huh? It, it helped with the efficiency of the homeowner in maintaining the bread rather than wasting it. It allowed better storage, and almost every bread now you buy is sliced. I have a program for you tonight that I call the Wonder Program. In these packages, you will see with SBA, their cost for this program. I even put in instructions on how to do the items that I want to get done. And I think those are the two things that are in there. There's a, one from another auditor, the State Board of Accounts, that said they liked this program. But like the bread, this program and the way we're, what I'm proposing to do is going to be expanded throughout the state rather than staying the way it is now. What I want to do, I want to take the financial system of this county from the 1950s up into the, up to 2024. And we're going to work on doing claims digitally, we're going to do budgets digitally, and any other items that we want to put on this program over the years. What you have in front of you is merely the claims of 20, oh, in addition, it's $2,500. The one from Lau was $7,400. They're not going to get it. We're going to do with this, this group. They're currently here doing things over in the clerk's office, which is an advantage, I think, for, for me.
Just the companies that are getting.
Yes.
So.
And.
$2,500 is just the initial cost?
It's initial cost and training. If you look on the, the bill there, you'll see the breakdown between the two.
And then it's $2.50?
It's so much a year after that.
A month, $2.50.
Right.
Okay.
The, in order to do this, I need to know whether you have any objections to continuing, or you would support me in doing this. The, the budgets, I can call, and they can have these budgets in and wait to do them in 30 days, which allows Tony's question of whether I'm going to get this done by budget time. We can, it gives us enough space in there that we, when we have problems, we can go back and deal with them. The, the claims are going to be, they say easier, and they're looking at a two to three week installation time on the digital claims. I don't see any reason for not doing this. I don't, I've kicked this whole thing around, I've talked to two different companies, I've chosen the company I think we ought to go with. This program is going to be good for taxpayers, is, it, it allows better bookkeeping in the county, it, it's more efficient, it eliminates waste, allows better storage of the information instead of what we're doing now. And in the future, I think more, more and more counties are going to go this direction instead of what, the way we do it now. But.
So Jeff and I met with Mark.
Right.
Monday or Tuesday, I can't remember.
Whatever, yeah.
And we talked to Debbie in the office, and she said they, the people in the office have all looked at, and it is very user-friendly as compared to the other alternative. And they just said it would make life so much easier with this, with this claim system.
Both on my office and the other offices that prepare the claims.
Now, what we asked that day was that you give us a schedule about when this could start, and then how you're going to bring each department on.
I'll tell you now.
Okay.
The way I intend to do this, if I get some kind of indication from you that I can continue, we will set up various offices. I'm going to break them down into sections. We're not going to do everybody at one time. And but as we go through it, for example, the first go around with the claims, it's going to be my office, auditor, treasurer, highway, I T. And then for two weeks, we're going to do it both ways, both with paper and in this system, so that if there is an error, we can find it easier, I hope. Then we'll move on to the next group of office holders and gradually work it down through the whole system and get them all into this. The budgets, it's, it, it's going to take 30 days to set the program up and do what I want to do with it, which gives us enough time to answer Tony's question about can you guarantee we're going to get this done by budget time? If I start now, yeah, I'm going to be able to get this done by budget time and have time left over to make sure it's correct.
Mark, does that integrate well with Lau?
Yes. Lau is the financial system.
Right.
This is not a financial system. This is a program that allows to use that financial system in a digital manner.
Okay, when you, when you first took office, we were already doing claims electronically.
Not this way.
How, I was just going to say, how were we doing it at that time? And then you changed it, and we went back to paper.
I used paper.
Okay, but what were we doing to begin with? What, what's the difference?
Okay, the, the way they were doing it was like an email. And then you had, you went through the process of posting that email and doing the claim. This, if you, you read that thing, it says they're going to take the claim, they'll download it into a scanner, they'll get it sent over to my office, and then we pay it. There is, when we get done, there is no paper left that we're going to store.
They create their claims on this program?
Yes.
And then, like, it has auto fill, so every time you do a claim, you're not redoing all this stuff for your department. So that makes it easier? It's going to save time for the users. Easier for the departments to do and to hang on to, and for your department to find one when, you know.
Yes, it's.
I T calls and says, hey, where's the invoice for?
The other part about it is the State Board of Accounts likes this system. And it, it allows them to just physically come in, look at the programs, the claims we've put into the system, we give them access to it, and they can audit it much easier at that point.
So if I added this correctly, it looks like it's $5,350, is that for the first year?
Well, it's $2,500, including training on the installation. The other part is so much a month.
Setup and all these other things.
I'm not, okay, the other add-ons.
The one time.
I hope will come later, but not at first. Don't have the.
Well, this says setup is 1,500, and I would assume that setup is the initial part of.
Right.
Right?
And then plus a thousand for training.
I think it's 350 a month. The document management part is 250, and then the claims part of it is 100.
Yes.
So it's 350 a month.
Yes.
And do you have that in your budget? So where to?
No.
Well, that changes everything.
That's why I'm here in front of you. If I had it in my budget, I wouldn't be here.
So does this only affect the claim process, none of the other things that we're doing?
There is a, there is a list on what he has there that we can expand to. For example, storage of, managed storage of contracts, story, it's, it's a system that can be expanded. I don't particularly want to do that expansion off the bat. Maybe a year from now, we might be here talking about doing some other things.
But essentially, it's a storage and retrieve system, which is exactly what the clerk is doing. The difference is they're scanning for the clerk, and then it's, it's in this portal where you can access it, you can print it off, you can.
And everybody can look at it. One point I didn't mention is the Lau installation that we started some time ago is complete, it's on there, and we're going to try to have some type of a training program Friday, but it's going to be simple. The, the programs that this needs will be programs that office holders have to be able to go back and look, pull up their budgets, pull up, pass claims, and have access to their, to their own information.
So back to my question, though, this, this is only affecting the claims process and some digital storage stuff maybe, but not any other operations in your office outside of claims?
Not that I'm aware of. It, it's, there are other things that eventually I'd like to do.
Yeah, but today.
But today, I am off only dealing with this particular program.
Mark, has Craig from I T. looked at this?
Craig and I had worked on it several times, and he is helping me go through and establishing which offices I want to do first, so that I don't bunch bad ones, if that's not the right term, in with altogether. And that's why I want to take it, I've got the list, anyway, to go through them.
So for a year after the initial $2,500 setup, and this is only if we stay with just the claims part of it, it's about $4,200.
Right.
$4,200 plus the $2,500, the one-time thing. Do you have that, and do you have a contractual professional line or anything you can?
I do not. I did, but it was removed because I didn't anticipate having a need for a contractual The, the items that we had used on that contract, contractual lines were not necessarily ones that would, would have stayed. I T. and I have put together a list of the office we want to go through and do first, second, third, and fourth. What I'm asking is, I, quite frankly, I don't see a reason not to do this. If you have reasons not to do it, I'd like to hear them. But it's something that, that a lot of the counties who do bookkeeping the way we do it now are going to be going to this. It's, it's simple, it's beneficial to the auditor's office and the bookkeepers in every office that are out there.
Hopefully to eliminate any duplication and things like that.
It should, yeah. But I'm going to tell you, there are going to be problems when we can start this, and you're going to hear about it, and.
Everybody goes kicking.
We just have to work them out.
Yeah.
We have a product in our office called Smart Bolt, and it's a file, electronic.
Broadcast, yeah.
It's very, you know, if, if, if this is going to be used like we use ours, I think it could be very helpful. And indeed, you know, if this comes about next year, though, would like for you to put it in your budget. You know, we, this, however, is not a $50,000 project.
No.
You know, but, you know, I would be, I would be supportive of it. I think it would be helpful one.
Yeah. So.
I want to start this year.
No, he just said next year you need to put it in your budget. I mean, it's all, we already, what, no January, because you're not going to even get it started. I mean, it's all, we already, what, no January, 'cause you're not gonna even get it started in January. So, we would need to give you, what?
I need the original setup money.
Sixty-two fifty.
And then the cost of the monthly bill.
Yeah.
That goes to IT.
They're gonna pay it out of their budget?
They already paid fifty-seven thousand for all the LAO.
The software.
Software that we have now. It's, I think it's fifty.
Twenty-five hundred dollars.
Pardon?
You just need the twenty-five hundred dollars for the initial setup.
I need to know, yes, for the original setup.
But I have a question for you, Mark. You have three thousand in office supplies and three thousand in printed office supplies.
Sorry, look at that.
Can you not, what, what are you using those for?
If, if you don't have money in your budget to do it, I'm gonna take money out. I'll take so much out of each one of those line items and fund the twenty-five hundred.
I was just wondering what, in particular, what is printed office supplies? What do you?
Uh, uh, forms, hopefully, some of this stuff's gonna be eliminated.
It's gonna be getting rid of forms.
Well, since, since you brought it up that you were gonna transfer.
I shouldn't have, but go ahead.
Would I be even more supportive if you told me that you would transfer X amount?
All right, I'll find money someplace and give you the transfer request.
It's just a matter of doing, doing a transfer. I'm asking, do you have monies in there instead of?
At the time I put this budget together, and which is far larger than the budget you passed in twenty-three for this office, in doing transfers this early in the year, I don't know what the result's gonna be in November and December. That's basically why I would like to look to council to fund this out of contingency, anything. The, I wouldn't let that stop me. If I had to come back and, and show transfers, if I wanna proceed with this, and once I get the, an, an okay to provide money in some manner, the twenty-five hundred dollars in relation to a lot of expenditures around here is not a lot of money.
Does anybody wanna make a motion? What do you think?
We don't have to.
If he's gonna transfer, but it's twenty-five hundred dollars. We probably end up giving him money for his line by later.
I was gonna say, what if, if he transfers and pays for it, but if he needs something in these lines, come back to us and we'll take care of it.
It's either one or the other.
Yeah. But one other quick question, are you gonna have more cost for LAO for giving access to everybody in the county? Is that gonna cost more?
No.
No?
That discussion was held this morning with Andy Isle, and the answer is no.
Okay. Well, then, I'll make the motion, we give twenty-five hundred out of what, where? Contingency?
Yes.
Is that our?
We can give him the twenty-five hundred, otherwise we're gonna have to transfer money later. Motion by Kathy, second by Mary. Any other questions? All in favor?
All right.
There you go. You're welcome.
Yes, you're welcome. I'm sorry, thank you. I think this benefit is out there for everybody. When it comes to budget times, I gotta make sure that all council members have a computer.
Yeah, we do.
And we're gonna.
Can you make a progress on that?
Yep.
Yeah.
We're gonna have a little class Friday on how to run this thing with LAO, the, the various reports.
Yeah.
So anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
I hope this is good as Wonder Bread.
I hope it is too.
Mark, a few sure things like this, it would be better if this kind of information was given to us a few days ago so that we could look at it.
That information I gave to Jeff and Beth.
On paper.
But I didn't have all of the information. I think there's additional information in there that they didn't have. And I know what you're saying, I understand, but I didn't have all of it. And I wanted to get this out here as quickly as I could, 'cause I didn't wanna wait another two weeks till council meets again.
Okay.
Just remember, when you do have the opportunity.
Oh, I, I understand.
Email it, email it, email it, email it.
You don't have to take them.
I don't use computers, no, yes, I do.
Somebody in your office would.
Okay, last but not least, we need to talk about radio communication system assessment.
I don't know, we spent twenty minutes talking about sixteen hundred dollars, and here we're talking about millions of dollars. So I hope you all.
You got three minutes.
Don't have anything to do tonight.
No, you have six.
Okay, six minutes, thanks for the six minutes.
So, well, in respect of our guest from out of state that's part of my team, we will take a few minutes to talk about this project. But in brevity, all of the commissioners and council members, you've received this lengthy document and an email this afternoon in anticipation of giving you time to read it, digest it.
This afternoon?
No, no, not this afternoon. For sure, there's not gonna be any codes or any decisions made tonight. But it'll provide you the opportunity to, to ask questions in the future. You can email me, or we can have a discussion at a later time. There's not a decision here for council or commissioners yet tonight. First off, I'd like to introduce Amy Lepore and Dylan Griffith with Amphen Planning. They're from Maryland. They're our radio experts that teams with my company around the state doing radio projects. And we've worked in several counties. And they've spent quite a bit of time in Wayne County over the last few months helping us with, with this project. And you'll hear from them in a few moments. If you remember, you contracted, I've been a public safety consultant with the county since before I was elected to council, and I've been fortunate to continue in that role. And you contracted my company to do a radio system assessment based off of the prioritization of the community group in the health program when emergency communications became one of the priorities. That was in the list of things that came before council commissioners and was approved and was subsequently approved by the state. And there was one point five million dollars earmarked in those funds for emergency communications. We've known for thirty-five or forty years that there's been a problem with radio communications in Wayne County since the time I was on the police department, when I was the nine-one-one director here, back when Bob talked through a tin can and a string. We've had problems.
It still works.
And we've been, it still works, we've been good at fixing those problems as we've gone through the years. But old technology is old, old infrastructure is old, and it's just continually given us problems as new technology has come along, better opportunities, better systems. And we were able to leverage these dollars in, in one-time cost to help advance emergency communications in the county. We have met with a large number of public safety officials, fire chiefs, police chiefs, sheriffs, officers. We've involved the radio vendors from Wayne County. We have worn Aaron out and Matthew with our request. The radio vendors have been tremendous. We've worked with the State Integrated Public Safety Commission. And so we've really been inundated with information that we needed to do this assessment. Unfortunately, there were some communities in Wayne County whose agencies did not participate. And some of those public safety agencies that did not participate are some of those who have been the agencies that have been the loudest in, the system doesn't work. We can't communicate, we can't hear dispatch, the tones are not going off on our pagers, and those kinds of things. And while they've not participated up to this point, as commissioners make decisions for us to move forward, we're going to do our due diligence to circle back with those communities and try and get them to become involved. And we hope that they will, because if not, it's gonna create them an issue in public safety communications even more than what the deficiencies are here today. This is.
Can I just ask quickly, why didn't they? Any idea?
We were told in the beginning that they probably wouldn't, and that's all we were told. And so, you know, we, we sent emails, we tried to work through associations, and just didn't get a response. Yeah. You know, the commissioners and council are to be recognized for supporting the work of the community group and prioritizing this. And it'll be a benefit, because what we're planning to recommend will be communications for the next twenty, twenty-five years that will serve Wayne County fairly well. With that, what I would like to do is have Amy and Dylan give you an overview of the assessment. And then we're gonna share some maps with you that will help visualize the communication capabilities in the county. There is a lot of information in this report that we will not share here with you tonight, because it's not public record information, it's, it's public safety. And so I would encourage you to take time to, to read the report, to better understand some of the information that you hear here tonight. And Jeff, we're only gonna take about forty-five minutes, so.
If I, I can ask a question, though.
Yes.
You said you're gonna show the maps, but you're not gonna show the maps of where?
No, these are coverage maps. This'll be a map of Wayne County.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely, I think Barry, Barry did not tell us forty-five minutes. He told us about fifteen. So we, we commit to being brief.
We accept that.
But I know you have that report in front of you. And so when you go through that report after we leave and you find that you have questions, Barry knows that we will be able to, you know, make sure we can respond in a timely fashion with, with answers. We can certainly meet with you again, we can provide answers in writing. That's a lengthy report, you're gonna have some questions, we're perfectly fine with that. But we're grateful to be here, and I was counting in my head, I think this is our fifth project in Indiana, our fifth county with, with Barry. And Dylan and I do radio work all over the country. We pride ourselves on our work with local government. We're both coming from a public safety background. We have both been on the other end of the radio, and so this is near and dear to our heart. We have enjoyed working in Wayne County, getting to know Aaron and Matthew and the various responder agencies that we have been able to meet with. So thanks for having us here. Do you wanna introduce yourself real quick, Dylan? And I could talk a little bit about our project.
Sure, Billy Griffith, I'm the technical lead for this project. I'm your radio frequency engineer. I served on radio work in the Army, an electronic warfare officer, got out of that, moved into public safety, I've worked on SWAT teams, worked in fire, EMS, have done a little bit of everything, search and rescue, you name it. I've been involved in it, I've managed radio communication systems, especially ones that look a lot like yours. And I have charted them out of that and gone to a more modern system that suited their needs. And then moving out of the public sector and into the private with our business, I've helped a lot of counties to do that very same thing. It's been fun getting to know everybody here at Wayne County, you've got a good group of people, and your problems are relatively easy to solve, so I think this is gonna be a good result for you guys.
So this, this report does a lot of things, there are many sections, but our objectives, really, if we are to boil it down, are two. I wanna tell you what you have here. What does your coverage look like with your existing system? And then we wanna tell you a little bit about, oh-oh. Off the cuff, it's just fine. So again, two things, we wanna let you know what you have. So we have provided a number of coverage maps. You'll be able to see what your existing coverage looks like on the current systems that are in use. But we also wanna let you know, not one option, not this is the direction you must move forward, but we will make a recommendation. What we will provide in our proposal, what you will see, is a series of paths forward. Some things you can do, opportunities for lower budgets to make some system improvement, and we can help guide you through that process as well, and some projects for bigger budgets, too. Right, which are those twenty-five and twenty-year improvements that will be longstanding and have some consistency here in the county. But we also pride ourselves on providing you with a series of paths, not just here's the, here's the big ticket path, you must take that one, that's not how we do business. We do two things when we assess a current system. We make sure, we don't just provide you with maps and look over your documents, we really dig into end user information. So the responding agencies in the county, not just fire, but also law enforcement, received a survey from us, and we ask them to distribute that to their, people with the best institutional knowledge, the guys who know, the guys and girls who know where the, where the radio calls have had coverage problems, what facilities they are frequently responding into, where they know there have been coverage issues, what, how often their, their operation is impeded by coverage problems. And then also what good things exist, what's important to you as we make transition. If there is a, a new system to speak of, what attributes of your current system are important. So we really are focused on understanding the end user in Wayne County with their experiences of your current system and a little bit about what their expectations are for you to move forward. We also provide mapping that will be different than mapping you see in your vendor proposals. So if we move forward and you get proposals backed from some of these big vendors, Motorola, Harris, EF Johnson, these are names you may have heard, they're gonna give you a snapshot, kind of at a, at a high level of what your coverage looks like. But that's not how we do business. Our mapping, what you'll see from us is, is a little more, a little more true to form. We'll tell you a little bit more about the area here in Wayne County. You're gonna see in just a minute, we really drill down and can provide you, even at the neighborhood level, I know there are some communities of concern here, some places where there historically have been coverage issues. And we can help, and we may have already, right, there are a lot of maps in that packet that you have. But we are definitely prepared to provide you with a drilled-down understanding of coverage here in Wayne County. So, we've spent a lot of time here, we've seen all of the, the county sites. You'll see those tower sites documented, a lot of pictures. We were able to do aerial pictures as well with the drone. So really, a good understanding of what is currently on the system or what is currently at those sites. So those, those onsite visits have been incredibly important. We've also had the opportunity to not just do site visits and see your equipment, but to meet with your end users, to engage with them, to not just launch that survey where they are giving us written feedback, but also to hear what they have to say about their, their concerns and their existing coverage. A lot of document analysis, you don't want me to go into that right now. There's just a whole lot we had the opportunity to look at, the, the county vendors currently. Were gracious, provided us with everything that they had, so that's tech services and ERS, these are names you might have heard, again, very gracious, provided us with historical documentation of the system and allowed us to have that, that propagation mapping, that recreation of the system that Dylan will, will review about in a minute. So you're gonna see a lot of colorful maps, those maps are the existing system, and that's not just the county system we have mapped. We've also mapped out that state system for you, that PSC system, so that you can see what that coverage is like, because we understand there have been conversations in the county to date which involve, you know, maybe using those state resources as well as a supplement to the, the county system or in lieu of the county systems. We are gonna provide you with those maps. And again, we drilled down at the community level where we know there are historical problems, so you will see focus of, a series of focus zone maps. And then, not in an exhaustive fashion, but, but sufficient to show you what some of the potential paths forward could be, we have provided you with some new configurations. What would it look like if we took one of your towers and put it in a different, you know, a different bandwidth? What would it look like to join with the state systems? And so we have provided some of those possible configurations. Understand that those are not exhaustive and those are not final. We hopefully will be here to help you through system design and making sure that your vendor does a very good job of providing you with an excellent system. But understand that there's also the opportunity for our vendor to come in and to say, hey, we can, we can tweak some things. Here's impossible to consider all of the potential antenna configurations and tower replacements and, and opportunities to move forward, but there, we believe that, again, starting kind of at the lowest level where maybe you change some antennas around, right, which makes some maybe small-scale improvements, that there are opportunities on small, medium, and large-scale budgets to make improvement here in Wayne County. That was an exciting finding of ours. Dylan, do you wanna talk through the current system coverage?
Yeah.
Hey, let's start with the differentiation between.
That's what I was gonna do.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, you gotta start at the start. Are you guys reasonably familiar with how your first responders use the radio system? Or just not really at all?
Not at all.
I'm not.
Just, I'm just gonna start really at the beginning, then essentially. Then essentially, the way that this works is you have a number of towers in the county. Those towers talk via wireline interface back to your dispatch center. Your dispatcher's key up on that dispatch console they have there. And that communication goes out over the towers of first responders here. That's your fire, your law enforcement, they all do that. And they communicate via a couple of radios. They have base station radios that sit in their stations. That's a thing that sits on the table top. It's got a microphone on it and an antenna attached to the building. Then they have mobile radios, which are inside of the units that they're actually responding in. Mobile radios typically have large antennas and they can get out pretty much anywhere. Then they have portable radios. And the portable radio really is kind of the lifeline for a first responder. The portable radio is the thing they wear on their hip. It's got a microphone up here and they do the vast majority of their communication over that. Now, didn't always used to be that. Used to be the majority of radio systems were designed just for mobile radios because that's all there was, right? There was a deputy who went out in his patrol car and did all your communication over that mobile radio. Portable didn't exist then. And that's important to know because the technology that you are on for your current radio system really is the technology that was popularized when that mobile-only radio communication is what the vast majority of public safety radio communication was. It's a VHF radio system. VHF is a large frequency band. It takes up a lot of space physically in there. You don't see it, but it does. And it travels a long distance very well. It is a very good radio system when you need a mobile-designed radio system. But the problem with VHF is because it travels long distances over flat spaces very well, it also terminates nearly immediately when it encounters a structure or any kind of an object that imposes attenuation on the signal. So, dense foliage, buildings, things like that. VHF radio system tends to immediately stop when it hits those walls in all but the areas at the very closest proximity to the radio tower. That's what you can expect to see. Now, in some of those areas, you'll see the multiple colors on the maps here, yellow and green. In those places, you will have some in-building communication. But the vast majority of your coverage here in Wayne County is portable only. Before I get into 7800, we'll just talk about what you have. Because you understand what you have now. It's a VHF radio system, very high frequency. It's 154 megahertz. And you have three towers which provide you that service. Your first responders use a mix of mobiles and portables. And they're out there doing their thing. And this is what they deal with on a day-to-day basis. This coverage might not make much sense right now, but I'll explain it. You've got green, yellow, and red. That green, the yellow, and the red is representative of the levels of attenuation that are standardized within the NFPA standards. NFPA is a national standard for fire and EMS. It's a group that gets together and defines some of these terms so that everybody is working with the same set of definitions. And they define light, medium, and portable outdoor coverage, the way that we're showing you here. So, in the red in Wayne County, your first responders can expect to be able to communicate on a portable radio standing outside. In the yellow, your first responders can expect to be able to communicate on a portable radio standing inside of a stick-built residential structure, providing 12 decibels of attenuation. So, an asphalt roof, just a standard two-by-four frame residential building. And then that green is really medium-to-medium heavy construction. That would be some of your mortar-construted buildings, a courthouse.
This building.
This building, a courthouse. But this building actually is going to do a lot worse. I'll tell you why here in just a sec. And what you'll get out of that medium construction, you'll begin to encounter problems with things like a Walmart or things here where you have a variety of high attenuation materials like glass or metal. Glass and metal don't do a very good job with RFP. They tend to kill it very quickly. So, in your Walmarts, you're not going to be able to talk very much. And in residential structures, which is very popular now, residential structures with metal roofs, you see a lot of tin roofs on buildings now. Tin roofs tend to make your residential structure behave more like a medium structure. So, if you have tin roofs out in houses within that yellow area, and you have a firefighter inside there fighting a fire, he needs to hear from his command about where he needs to direct water, put it out, it is unlikely that he will be able to receive that communication on anything with a talk-around frequency. Does that make sense? So, it's a good picture of where you go. You can jump in if you have anything.
Yeah, I want to, we'll go to the next map here in just a second. But I want to point your attention to that northeast corner of the county. Because I think the next map we have for you is the...
Nothing. It's nothing.
We talked about, we talked about everything else. My battery...
That's just how bad it is.
So, that, you saw that northeast area of the county.
Yeah.
There is no color there, right? And so, that, and maybe you have heard from your constituents that is reflective of the poor coverage in that northeast corner. And so, a piece of our work is to understand what resources it will take to make sure there is enough coverage. I think the next map we were going to show was the state system.
Yeah, that's okay. I can jump into what it's going to look like for you while Barry does triage on his computer. So, those are your challenges here in Wayne County. You're on a VHF radio system. And it really is designed for outside communication. That's just what it's good at. Probably does a pretty good job at that barring other ambient factors, which we probably won't have time to get into today. So, you already heard this. They really want me to speed up. They know I can go a long time on this. The major challenges that you have are going to be in that northeast and the southwest corner of your county. On that map, if you...
Where are they?
On the northeast and south, you have, what's the name of the, it's a tall point, not a hill.
Hoosier Hill.
Hoosier Hill. That's it. Hoosier Hill really is your hill to climb in the northeast corner of the county.
See what you said.
Yeah, it's good. It basically generates an area where you're never going to get coverage at the very top. It will be able to locate an antenna at the top of that hill. But the major issue is that the ridge that runs south of it creates a shadow for essentially all of your county-located towers to the east of it. And that geological barrier would be very difficult to overcome in almost all circumstances. But when the IPSC map comes up here, you'll see, just as a result of the way they happen to have their antennas directed today, the rear lobe of one of the antennas is pointed straight up at that point. And it does resolve, I'm going to say, 70 to 80% of the coverage problems in that northeastern corner in all but that area immediately to the east of the ridge from Hoosier Hill. So, it narrows that non-coverage area dramatically.
Can you touch on the transition of technologies between VHF and what the state system uses?
Yeah, yeah. So, just the, well, yeah, I was waiting for the map to come up because it'll make more sense when they see it. But here's what IPSC looks like.
Dylan, let me do an introductory of the state system. So, State of Indiana has a state integrated public safety commission that provides a statewide Trump 800 system free to public safety. If you recall, several years ago, we transitioned law enforcement away from VHF over to the state's 800 system. And today, all of the law enforcement agencies here operate on that as well as REED EMS. And then, a lot of the fire service will use that as their secondary means of communication if they're having trouble with VHF. And while the state provides that free, don't think moving forward in this scenario that that is free for additional resources. There'll be costs that we'll talk about. But it has saved local government millions of dollars by the state maintaining that. So, go ahead, Dylan.
Yeah. What we're looking at here is the EPC system as it exists today in your county. If you can remember the map of the VHF compared to this, the major differences that we'll see are largely a result of just the physics of how 7800 megahertz behaves differently than VHF. 7800 is a much denser wavelength. It's a much denser wavelength. It travels less distance. But the distance that it does travel, it provides a denser frequency, a much higher concentration of coverage. So, on 7800 megahertz systems, you will see much higher levels of light and heavy building coverage. And you'll tend to see less of that portable outdoor coverage. So, the downside is the 7800 tower does not cover as much distance as a VHF tower. But it does, in the area that it does cover, it is coverage that is to that public safety grade, something that a first responder would be reliably able to expect to communicate from inside of a building. And that's what we see on these maps up here. Much bigger blooms of green and yellow. The major differences you'll see is, are we able to go to the old map just real quick? I want to look at the northeast now. There we go. All right. So, this is, let's focus on the northeast corner and the southwest corner. Just try to memorize those, how big that area of non-coverage. Where there is no color at all, your guys aren't talking. And in the areas where that cover is just kind of feathered in, that is tentatively there. That is under ideal environmental conditions in a circumstance of solar activity, fog, those little feathered areas where it's speckled red coverage, that's going to reduce dramatically from where it is. So, if we go back down to EPC. And this is what EPC looks like here. In that northeast corner, it resolves the vast majority of your coverage problems and provides portable outdoor coverage. But what it does do is it greatly expands the amount of light and heavy building coverage you have in the county. Now, in the southwest corner, you'll see it's actually worse. Yeah. It is not as good really as what you're dealing with today. Now, your southwest corner on your VHF system is pretty feathered in. So, when the environment takes a turn, likely that coverage is going to go away. Because VHF as opposed to 7800 is more subject to those external forces. So, when the solar flares happen, when the fog rolls in, your VHF disappears. It retreats much, much more than 7800, which hardly does at all. Are we going to the future though? Are we just scrolling?
I was going to go to your aggregate.
Got it. That's perfect. So, this is one of our proposed solutions.
Just very quickly, the county operates on three sites. The state system that you just saw with that improved coverage in the northeast corner, that is two sites. So, now we're going to show you one of the potential configurations.
Yeah, this, I'm trying to be short here, so I'm just jumping right to the good stuff. But this is what I feel is your best value in terms of a way of solving this problem. It allows you to leverage your ability to directly move on to EPC, lowering your maintenance burden for towers by two. And you maintain one of your current tower sites. The highway location, you've already got it. There's already a tower there. There's no new construction. Convert that to 7800 megahertz. There will be some cost for infrastructure equipment, but the tower and the concrete work is the bulk of the cost anyway. And that allows you to remedy the downside of the EPC system, which is that lack of coverage in the southwestern corner. And it remedies that very effectively and fills you in with light building coverage in the vast majority of your county. The overall coverage percentage, you see we're getting up to 93.31%. That is well within, well within the area of where we would consider it a successful public safety system.
You're currently operating in like an 84% coverage. So, I don't want Barry to have to go back, but it is sufficient for public safety coverage by every measure.
Yeah. And more importantly than just the portable outdoor coverage is what you get in light buildings. That's where your people need to communicate the most. This seems like it is the best solution for you guys. It lets you only continue the maintenance of one of your current towers. Migrate away from two of them, so your long-term costs of ownership disappear for two. Just keep one, convert that to 7800. The highway location that you already have, it happens to be one of your better sites already. It's in good condition. Some of your other ones would require a little bit more remediation. There will be some costs when you go to pull the equipment down and put the new stuff up on this one. There are things that are lacking at that site. You might want, none of it is particularly expensive. You probably want a ductless mini-split where the server rack equipment is, maybe some dust ingress protection, a dust guard on the door, simple things. But, and some enhanced grounding. But that will get you a very good radio system, in my opinion. And we've done a number of designs. I don't know how in-depth you want me to get on this, Barry.
That's good.
Okay. I can go.
Yeah, that's all right. You'll notice in this aggregate map, up in the northeast corner of the county, you still see some white. And that's with the additional tower being added at County Highway. We still have coverage concerns up in there. And at the operations board meeting for the 911 center this morning, we presented this to the ops board. And we had a great deal of discussion about the northeast side of the county. And I actually learned something from Dylan, that there's a ridge or a valley that runs up through there that we really need to deal with. And so, as we move forward with this option as approved, we'll expect the vendors, when they submit a proposal, to solve that problem for us with some type of infrastructure in the northeast side of the county. We don't know what that is, what that would look like. We don't expect it to be a tower by any means. But there is some commercial towers up in that area there that would be a possibility, some private real estate, those kinds of things that we'll have to entertain. This is really, becomes a two-pronged project. And when you read that report and you look at the recommendations from us, we start at the least expensive and go to the most expensive. I will tell you that the most expensive one in that report is Wayne County doing their own 7800 system. I would never recommend that as your consultant, and I'd never vote for it as a council member. Yes.
That's your most expensive option. It's also your worst option. It's just there for two televisions. You're not going to want to build your own standalone 7800 megahertz system. The only reason why you would do that is if you guys, and this is really only a thing in much more densely populated areas, is if you guys felt the need to push large amounts of data over a radio system where maybe a shared system would not permit you to do that. If you're going to have car location data, video things going over your tower, and you needed the autonomy to be able to modify the infrastructure to allow for that, it's not a thing you guys are going to be doing. And there's no value there for you to have a stand, to incur all the costs of maintaining a full standalone 7800 system. Yes, ma'am?
Why do you think Randolph County went that direction?
That's usually vendor-driven.
Okay. One of the benefits that we have is that we are vendor-agnostic. We have worked with every major freedom system, vendor that you can't imagine. Dylan, I like to brag about this because it's something we bring to bear as a master technician for Harris, for E.F. Johnson, for Motorola in terms of his training. So, they're, and our company, again, been completely vendor-agnostic. And so, we like that relationship with the county. We can be your liaison with your vendor, but primarily, we see ourselves as being kind of your first line of defense, making sure you're getting really good and high fidelity information.
Thank you.
Yeah, any vendor's radio system is going to perform as well as the next. They're all roughly the same technology. Properly implemented, they're all going to work. Yeah. I wouldn't get into the vendor trap. That's a common thing.
So, as commissioners review the report, talk to council, consider the options that exist there, this really takes on a dual project, two-pronged approach, if you will. The first being the radio infrastructure at a tower, any remote transmit sites that we need to consider and utilize. The second is working with all of the volunteer fire departments in the county. Today, they are paged on the VHF system. And I'll tell you, I do work in, I think I've done work in almost 30 counties in Indiana. And those who rely on VHF systems are relying on VHF systems. And that's what they use, and that's what they trust. And when you start talking about going to a different technology, it really raises concerns. It takes training for them to understand. We went through this in the law enforcement side about using a new radio. Because that radio is really a computer. It's not a two-channel portable radio on your hip. So, it takes training. But in this project, the one thing that's key is the money that has been identified. It is our hope that because we're not building a large number of towers in the county, that we'll have money available to help the 12 or 13 volunteer fire departments across the county purchase a new radio, 800 radios and dual-band pagers to be able to communicate on this system as their primary source. Now, we understand that there'll be those who are reluctant to do that. And I think that's where it's key for us to work collaboratively with them and train them and educate them on the benefits of this system. From here, once commissioners make that decision official and we're ready to move, we will move into developing the specifications for an RFP, one on the radio system itself and the other on the end-user equipment. We are in that clicking timeframe that we need to contract for this, or commit this money, as you know, by the end of the year and spend it in '25. as you know, by the end of the year and spend it in '25. That only gives us twenty-two months, which means we really need to start yesterday. And so we don't have a lot of time to delay in getting started in the specifications and the RFP process. So I'll be working with commissioners on that. With that, I would just encourage you, in your spare time, to read that report. That is in draft form, which means it is not subject to distribution beyond you. If you have questions, call me, send me an email, and Dylan and AVI will be happy to answer any questions as it relates to the report, the methodology, or the recommendation that we believe that the county should move forward with. So with that, if you have any questions?
The recommendation and the cost of that would be projected to be a million five-hundred-thousand?
Well, a million five is what was earmarked and helped us. And then the additional five-hundred thousand that is on that list that we reviewed earlier tonight puts the available money at two billion if you were to approve that other five-hundred-thousand. Right now, it stands at one point five. Where that one point five is developed in the budget is originally there was concern and discussion about the inability to communicate in the southwestern part of the county and in the northeastern part of the county. And based off of best-cost guessing, if we needed to build one tower side and maybe equip a second site with equipment, we thought we could do that in that neighborhood of one point five million dollars. Now, we haven't put the RFP on the street. We haven't developed the specs, so it'll be a few months before we get down to knowing what the price tag is.
But the one point five does not include any end-user equipment?
At the time we put the proposal together, we were not calculating end-user equipment into the equation because we did not know what the recommendation was going to be. Yeah.
There was, including the clause of retention and destruction. Now, this reduces that greatly. So the change, however, and it's important to know, is when you move from VHF to 7800, your VHF radios cannot communicate on this. So it does necessitate a full replacement of that user equipment. So you are likely to see the cost of construction, the cost of subscriber equipment replacement will probably end up being roughly about the same, in my opinion. You're probably $200,000 for RFP's equipment in that one site, and then whatever else is likely to be enough by subscribers. I think things will probably work out to be about the same.
One concern I have is that you had excellent response in your survey from fire departments, but only four police departments, but excellent response from the sheriff's department, leaving very small survey response from police departments. I think it was only four or five individuals. Do you feel that was adequate police department response, or would you like to get more police response? Because, for example, Hagerstown in Centerville had no response from...
Hagerstown participated in the face-to-face meeting. They were in attendance. We know today that all of the law enforcement agencies operate on the 800. So any investment that we make into 800 infrastructure is only going to bolster their ability to communicate. So, you know, for example, the marshal in Fountain City, that when he stops a car, he may or may not have locked, talking to dispatch. With this investment, that will address that concern. Hagerstown will be the same way, especially when you get up west of Economy. You know, Williamsburg, when you look at that report in the Williamsburg area, there's a real deficit, and it's the geography in the county. With this being the recommendation and we move forward with this, it'll deal with some of those areas.
So you feel you do have good response through a variety of communication methods with police, not just fire?
Yes.
And EMS? Okay.
What's the next step?
Realistically, the next step is for an official decision by commissioners to accept the recommendation in the report, to move forward with this project, which then allows us to begin working with the fire departments collaboratively to gather the additional information we need, but then for you to approve our next engagement, scope of work of developing the specifications. Because that's the important part, to start getting proposals to even know, you know, what kind of dollars are we talking about? Because it's important to understand that while our intent is to be able to help the end-user with their equipment, if this project becomes cost-prohibitive and it goes from one point five to five point five, and I'm just using that number, then that's not a viable project for the county to take on because we can't help the end-users. You know, we would never recommend, let's do this, if we didn't have a solution for the twelve volunteer fire departments who are going to need equipment. Because we cannot transition to this and then leave them on another system that we can't communicate with.
Do we have any volunteer fire departments that's on the 800?
In Wayne County, I believe there are some, and Gary, you can help me with this, that use it as their secondary means of communication. Or Aaron?
Secondary. Secondary. We got areas, VHF will work, they'll switch to the 800. Debate, 800's confusing, what will it train on? Had art, but it's a multi-billion channels, I guess, on that. So it needs to be set so there's only so many channels we can get with our radios we'd have.
Correct.
That way it would be there's confusing.
The other thing we're up to here, Jeff, is once you make this decision, I'll have to engage the state agency because we're going to have to work with them to scope an additional site and what it takes to put resources on. You know, one time the state had a program where if you built the tower and equipped it, they would take it on under their maintenance and they would pay for it. That program ended. So they'll still let you put additional tower sites on their system that could be used, but we maintain the maintenance of that system. At County Highway, it's ideal. We did not do a structural analysis on the existing tower. We may have to replace that tower. We may not. But we do need to put a communication structure at the base of that tower today. Those radios are sitting in the sign shop. It's not environmentally friendly. And so we need them to be in a temperature-controlled cabinet of some kind that's environmentally sound or safe.
Gary, I have a quick question. If you have a fire department, we'll just say Boston, they absolutely don't want to go to the new system. Do they have to? I mean, what's the, they say, we're not doing that. This is the way we've always done it. You know that saying?
Yeah, they're just fine.
Do they have the option? Can they do that? I'm just asking because I have no clue.
It's not going to work.
No.
Okay.
And that's the reason we need to do this collaboratively. When we took law enforcement to 800, when I was the director here, we had some agencies who just said, I'm not doing it. And, you know, the response from the county was, well, this is an improvement in technology. The two largest agencies in the county are going to 800. If you choose not to do that, you're going to operate on an island of your own, and to then talk to the sheriff's deputies or to talk to RPD, you're going to have to have another radio or your interoperability is not going to work. Some stayed on the VHF system for some time, but then they eventually migrated to 800. You never wanted to appear that we're saying you shall, but because the county is responsible under the statute for 911, and you have a statutory responsibility to receive the 911 call and relay it to the appropriate public safety responder, should the county make the decision that this is the infrastructure we're going to use and we're going to facilitate your transition to that, I would hope that they would be a willing participant. Because as you read that report, what we're going to recommend is that the VHF system exists today. The infrastructure's there. There are some deficiencies, but we're not advocating pulling all of that technology out because we want it there for redundancy. What we will be saying is that, you know, five years from now or five months from now, that remote transmitter fails, or the one in, Hagerstown gets hit by lightning, don't replace it because you're putting money into an infrastructure or a radio system that was not serving your purpose. For, to Gary's point, a lot of channels, that's why training is a part of our initiative or will be, to work with those agencies to train the end-users. Because at the end of the day, if they're on a traffic stop or they're in a fire, we want them to know what that radio's going to do, that computer, when they're in the heat of battle.
Barry, would we be experiencing any additional cost or consulting fee to move to the next step of getting to a hard quote?
Yes, I'm nice, but I'm not that nice.
Yeah. I couldn't find any numbers.
That is not in that report. I think when commissioners engaged, the last time, we agreed to do this in segments, and it's not all-inclusive. I will tell you that in the first scope of work, we're going to come in under budget. You know, we build these on estimated number of hours and effort, and the county only pays for the hours that are worked, the effort that's put out.
And we're close to the end of phase one?
Yes. With the delivery of this report, we're coming to the end of phase one. The second scope of work will be, it's much larger. It's over a twenty-two month timeframe, and it's expensive. You're buying time and expertise that I tell all of my clients that rest assured that at the end of the project, when you do a system acceptance, you're probably going to have saved money over what you pay a vendor versus what you pay a consultant. Not everyone likes using a consultant. And, you know, in this project, it's technical enough. I think it's in our best interest that we do that, if it's me or if it's someone else, because we don't want a vendor coming in, selling something that won't fix this problem.
Like Randolph County.
Like this problem.
So obviously, that next request would be to get those numbers to us unless they're in some prior document somewhere so that we...
I have the document prepared. I will send it to you.
Okay, good. I think we need that, to have that as a part of our discussion.
Yeah, I think so. Absolutely.
We'll discuss it next week.
Great. Yeah, we don't want to burn any more time.
I'll email it.
Great.
Any other questions? Probably not. Thank you very much. Appreciate having me to be here. Thanks, AVI and Dylan, for traveling back to Indiana.
Absolutely. Clearly, they know what they're talking about.
Thanks for sitting through our meeting and listening here.
It's been fun traveling back and forth. It's a great place. I like this building. All the people that don't like this building, you guys are wrong. This is awesome.
Thank you.
This mid-century.
Yeah, you have no idea what it is.
Hey, you want some goldfish? We can send you back to Maryland, right? Goldfish.
I had a feeling there'd be a few of those.
Yeah, send us some crabs. We give you some real good carp.
This does not sound like a wonderful one.
Won't be available. If questions come up that you guys think of, or Barry can even give you our email and go back and forth that way, or if you need me to, big things come up, I can come back down for another meeting and answer questions. That's no problem.
Just don't give us a pop quiz, okay?
Who is it?
The normal version of that talk is like an hour and a half.
Yeah.
Can we send Stormwater? He lost the paper.
Okay, we'll sign it.
So we just need to sign it. It's already improved.
It's already improved, yeah. So let's entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
A second?
Thank you.
All in favor? Aye.